But any of us will help you to walk through the details of what those are or do one on ones after we wrap up kind of the overview presentation. So really quick even for the people that are just walking in, my name is Ben Landhauser. I'm assuming the majority of you got an invite to this open house from me. So there's your connection of who I am.
You hit your sign and you meet the three of you here, one sign.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, what?
Just like to change the zoning, didn't know anything about that either.
Okay, so I'll definitely come and speak to that, but we did send out notice to everyone with a 750.
I'm Tim Nichols, I'm the CEO of our company and we appreciate you being here tonight however you've gotten here, honestly. Our objective is to share information with you. Ben Landhauser is the executive vice, uh, executive vice president of our development company. We've done this 41 times in Minneapolis and we're pleased to be here tonight. We're pleased to be here tonight to at least express to you what our proposal is to the city of Scottsdale and how we believe that this will be an asset to your community. And we know that there are people that maybe not agree with this. We're happy to answer questions and we'd like to make a presentation, is that fair with everyone? Thank you very much, Ben.
So the how we got here today, we submitted a concept similar to what you got if you received an invitation or what you've seen on the boards here tonight. That concept has been presented in just initial discussion fashion with the city of Scottsdale. Representatives from every department from the city weighed in just to understand, are we even close to meeting all city objectives if this was to move forward for approval? We got feedback from them and we were given a path to request formally approval of this project. Part of that process requires at least one neighborhood meeting, this first meeting. This will not be the only. We've got obviously a true north association as many of you are probably part of that we will be reaching out to to schedule another meeting to talk through any details the association has concerns or questions about. But we're, we're here today to kind of give you the first formula publicly at what our concept is. And in broad strokes without walking through each board that we have here tonight, there's a zoning that exists for the 20 acre PCC district that includes the two undeveloped properties, the 8.6 that we've been focused on that we're proposing a cooperative, I'll come back to that. There's also roughly a two acre undeveloped property just in south of this building. And then this building, the Circle K, Rosati's, the gas station, the Wells Fargo Bank and Walgreens. Those comprise the PCC district as it is. The zoning currently allows for those types of commercial businesses to operate. It also allows for residential at four units per acre, so no more than 80 total units to be planned into this district. The thing that is correlated to the zoning district is a development plan. And if any of you are interested, there's a board over here that shows the original development plan that shows that 8.6 acres being developed into a big box grocery store as an anchor with some ancillary retail, okay? Our proposal and what we've talked to the city of Scottsdale about is that original development plan did not identify where or specifically how the allowed residential uses would be placed within that 20 acre development. So what we are looking to do, what we're seeking from the city of Scottsdale is to amend the development plan so that we can show specifically where that residential allocation would go. That does take the place of the previously contemplated large box grocery store and the ancillary retail. But that's details of what our proposal is intending to do. We're not changing the zoning, we're simply clarifying where the residential that's allowed in the district is intended to go.
And Ben, for some clarification for the questions that I received before this meeting, this presentation started, it does not involve any change to the existing commercial retail that exists here or anything that fronts on to Dynamite either.
Correct.
It is strictly the undeveloped portion of the real estate that is located west of the mall only.
Do we know who you guys are, are there representatives from the city of Scottsdale, politician or council member here? Can I just see a hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Where is that person?
Vice Mayor Kathy Little.
A little bit more about our team, we got on the sales side, we've got some individuals that'll be able to answer questions as we roam around after the presentation. And we've got a really crackerjack architecture team local here from Arizona that has worked really hard to meld our vision together with what we think will be a great addition to the marketplace yet to talk about, Ben.
So on the 8.6 acres, our specific proposal if you will, is a cooperative housing development. As Tim mentioned earlier, we, that's kind of what our company does, we develop cooperative housing. If that's not a familiar product type to you, it's similar to a condominium. As most people are familiar with condominiums, you deal with ownership at the unit level. The difference between the condominium and the cooperative is the cooperative has a shared interest in a single mortgage. And then we have shareholders that own exclusive rights to a specific unit, 101, 202, whatever those units are, they're shareholders. And to be specifically clear, when I say share, this is not a timeshare, okay? This is true ownership, so.
Not like the rocks as an example, a multiple ownership, somebody asked me that.
Or parcel well. Correct. So you'll have exclusive rights as an owner, a shareholder in the cooperative corporation to whatever unit you have exclusive rights to, as well as any of the common area amenities that are either within the building footprint or on the grounds of that property. Does that make sense?
The basis for this premise bringing to the, your state and your town and your neighborhood is based on about 41 developments in Minnesota that we've done. And it's, we've done it under the same platform that Ben is outlining here tonight. The relationship of that community as it relates to the housing development that we proposed and have proposed on many occasions, we have won and respectfully and very, we're very proud of the fact that we've had architectural awards, we've had community awards bestowed upon us by the, by individuals in the marketplace as well as professionals in the industry. We've done a damn good job of making sure that we have put our best foot forward for the owners that buy our cooperatives in the communities that exist, Ben.
How many people up there that's representing, how many people live here in this area? How many of you?
Two. Of, of six. We'll answer questions at the end, we'll answer questions at the end, Ben?
Yeah, so as Tim was starting to hint at, the reason why we were drawn to this property, one, it has not been developed in the 20 some odd years that the zoning's been in place.
Partial infrastructures aren't been put in. That in 2008, the current single family.
And sir, I, I totally understand that you have a different set of information. We are not talking about the undeveloped or partially developed residential subdivision. That is nothing that we have control over, we have no option on it and we're not.
Over there it was, that's not the subject of this conversation.
So. So our proposal, what we look for, most of the people that move into our cooperative communities are looking for nearby access to conveniences, whether it's the Pony Express to grab coffee, pizza, Walgreens being there as kind of an augment of a smaller kind of grocery thing. Those are what the people that move into our communities are looking for. The thing that's unique to this particular site, if you've ever walked it, is that it has a ton of topography. And one of the things that we are trying to be uber sensitive to is not completely destroying the landscape to the degree that we're able to. The previous proposal and you'll even see records when the original proposal went in for that shopping mall development, is there were significant concerns about cut and fill. Basically destroying views that you all, if you live in the area, you're probably concerned about losing or not wanting to completely alter the landscape. That's our objective as well. And how we're looking to do that is we have two different building types. We have more of a traditional multifamily building that you'll see is kind of a larger spine looking building that's on the eastern side of the site. That building, as you may study in more detail later, is also broken into segments, basically three different pieces. That will allow us to fit that building into its topography much more naturally through stepping of those three different increments. The other thing that we're looking at doing, you'll see smaller footprints, those are casitas and we're doing those in kind of adjoined casita units that again, talking about the topography in our site, fit in between the high side of kind of the western area of our site and the natural wash that basically bifurcates the site almost through the middle. So we're looking to use building typologies that fit into the landscape so the people that would ultimately live there enjoy as close to a natural state as anyone that lives around it, that's our objective. Will there be some disruption to the topography? Yes, there will, but by and large, our objective is to fit into the natural landscape to the best ability that we're able to.
Is there another one of these located, these chickens looking things? Is there another one of these located anywhere in this area that we could take a picture to look at? Without looking at pictures of things?
So the question is, is there another product that you could look at? To date of ours, this would be the first one that we're looking at doing in, in Phoenix, Arizona, in the valley.
Our, our objective as we entered into this marketplace is to do as good a job as we've done in the twin cities, in Minneapolis, St. Paul. Again, we're very proud of that reputation and record. What did we do? We did not bring our team down from Minnesota. John, please step up. John is the principal of Architecton and he's a local architect that we have really gotten a lot of great information of. We have supplied what we believe is, is the magic of what has made over almost 5,000 people in the twin cities delighted with the experience that they've had through buying communities that we've developed, that they own. We're not bringing down a Minnesota architect, we're leaning on, on architects that have great knowledge and savvy in the Arizona marketplace. And John is that guy. He runs a firm that is tremendous, that we have learned a lot from and that he's learned a little bit from us too. John, maybe you'd say a few words about our efforts to date.
What's your company name?
John Kane with Architecton.
Thanks.
We're based in Tempe, we do work all over the state, working in DC Ranch right now, a lot of projects throughout Scottsdale. I personally ride mountain bike at Browns and, and team at Dynamite almost every weekend. So I love this area and when we saw the site, we were like, oh my gosh, this is absolutely incredible. And so we were really excited with Tim and Ben that they were really interested in not clearing the site and putting a big asphalt, your parking lot and a big grocery store, just, it's just such a beautiful site. If you see it, they were really interested in, one of the few developer clients that I've worked with that really cared about trying to keep this natural environment as much as possible. And how do we nestle the architectural seamlessly into that in a really kind of wonderful way? And we're still working on it, this is super early on, so the architecture's being still developed and refined. We're working with, bringing the landscape architects on, working on how to create this amazing indoor-outdoor environment that takes, takes advantage of this weather that we have, right? You know, how do we design for this crazy summers, but amazing, you know, shorter months that we all really get to enjoy, so, yes.
You talked about buildings and environment etc. The community center was explained to me that would be three stories high?
Well, the, the building is three stories high, the community element of that is one story, but it bleeds out into the pool.
No, 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 okay, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
The building would be three stories high. You talked about not disturbing the community, the environment, the natural environment. When you're driving past the roads, how high is this, what's the elevation? Are you going to see this three story structure from the road?
That's why we set the three stories down basically along the natural wash to basically get the building down in the valley. So if you look at the topography in terms of what we see from the street, we're down much lower in, in our, in the site that we're designing for than what's out along the main roads.
What's the height of the three stories?
So in the, in the, when we're, our building, because we're not commercial, it's a residential, so the floor to floors are 10 feet, so it's a much lower, so it won't be higher than this one.
So what are the elevation difference between Alma School and the base?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. We're cutting, we're cutting those sections and what we're in the throes of right now is trying to get the building floor plates to work with the natural grades in terms of 35 feet.
Elevation difference between Alma School and where the foundation is three stories.
Yeah, it's about eight to 10 feet.
Eight to 10 feet at least.
Depending on where in Alma School you're looking at. What I would tell you is if you were to walk out here, the main drive that's right in, right out from Alma School Drive, you walk into the site, there's a curb cut there where the hay for kind of the local group here has it. You'll walk in, as soon as you get to the lower clearing, that's basically ground zero of level one. And you're going to be several feet down even from this drive by walking into the site that direction. So it's, it's basically an entire story almost below where this building is today.
My reason, my reason for putting John on the spot was to let you all know that we're not flying into town. We do have a connection to here, I personally have a connection to here through Arizona State University. I got my degree in real estate, finance and development in 1989 from that. I'm proud of that.
Is that proper?
I get somewhat emotional about that because this is coming home to me, this is coming home. Happy to be here.
Is the property lower and susceptible to flooding? We're going through those iterations right now, we talked about, or I alluded to that natural wash that exists. We're going to harness that natural wash and provide some retention. So when we do have significant water drainage through the site, it's captured in these kind of retention basins so that we're not basically flooding out our sites.
A lot of people will come, a lot of people will come to these meetings thinking we're doing this because we have to and we do, we have to live up to the standards of the city of Scottsdale and we respect that. But we're coming here because we want to and additionally, as Ben said, we'll have more of these meetings. We do care about this and, and we will endeavor to get a great development done. And not because of us, the owners that come to our buildings want as great a development as you as neighbors to the buildings want it to be. I can assure you, it's a symbiotic relationship and nobody's fighting that goal. We want great things to happen in great neighborhoods and it might be change, but it's good change in comparison to contrast, ma'am.
Yes, I would just like to let everyone know, Councilwoman Betty Janik has arrived, she's here also.
Thank you.
I have a question for her. I mean, I hear.
Somebody has to speak them one at a time, so let's raise hands.
I have a question about ingress and egress out to Dynamite and out to Alma School.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain, have you done a traffic study on that and?
We're in the process of having a traffic study completed.
So by the time it gets to us, the traffic study will have been done?
Correct, by the time it gets to the city, we'll have, the traffic study will be completed. We have evaluations of the existing utility infrastructure, so we're basically giving reports and information of how this proposal would impact existing infrastructure of all kinds, including addressing traffic.
Let's go left to right.
So why are we putting apartments here? There's no apartments really intruned, so why are we doing that?
The answer is why are we putting apartments here, we simply aren't. We're building cooperative housing that's much more akin to a condominium that maybe many of you would know about. It's a condominium with a resort flavor that has more community space than any condominium that I can point to in the marketplace.
What will the price point be?
Price point's yet to be determined, it will, we're in the market right now of working on construction costs, but we don't know what we're going to build yet necessarily. We think we're close, but it'll be a market driven price point that will, and I can assure you this, will not exceed the top of the marketplace. This will be a solid middle to any community that we serve. All of the communities that we've built up until now has been in that genre if you will. Yes, there are more affordable things, cheaper, less expensive, this won't be that, but it's not going to be on top of the top, solid middle.
For clarity, when we talk about community, it'll be this immediate neighborhood community. So our objective is not to be any different in kind of a general cost per square foot than what any you may live in, but we're not, as Tim said, we won't be the highest, we won't be the lowest.
Ma'am?
Will the traffic study include Dynamite Road which is already overloaded by traffic?
Will the traffic study have Dynamite included? Yes, next question. Ma'am?
I just wanted to point out that Councilwoman Solange, Councilwoman Whitehead is also here.
Thank you ma'am, thank you. Sir. The average person, the average occupants will be one and a half people basically. Half the people might be moving in as singles and the other half the people might be moving in as couples or a shared unit between a sister and a brother or a sister and a sister, something like that.
How many units total?
78, 78 total units is what we're.
And how many parking spaces?
And what kind of parking?
We have covered parking and open parking and our ratio is somewhere close to 1.7 to 1. 1.7 to 1 parking stalls per home and it meets or exceeds the requirements of Scottsdale.
Is this an adult community?
Yes, adult community, the average age of the people that'll be moving in are probably in their 60s.
But the person has to be 62 or something like that and anybody.
Yeah, what's the minimum age for, for an owner?
Yeah, we put, we, we comply, we comport with the federal fair housing guidelines relative to occupancy.
But it's not, but it's not an adult community plus 55, I think that's where the.
Yeah, yeah, so our typical model is a 62 or older. And if you're moving in as a couple, only one of the two needs to meet that age qualification.
In essence, a 55 and older guideline however, might be the federal fair housing guideline that we follow.
And the, because I'm sure there'll be questions as well, since we've now talked about kind of an age qualification community, this does not have services. So if you're looking to compare us to say the Akoya product down around the road, which is a rental and it has services, we do not have any. Everything our, everything we have is basically single level living, just in a couple different stories.
So active adult and honestly to Ben's point, if, if any of our product even had a, a hint, thank you, a hint of resemblance to an assisted living community, we wouldn't have anybody move in. The people that are moving in are active, they're empty nesters, they just don't need their big home anymore, but they don't want to leave this phenomenal area that's north of Scottsdale.
As far as, as far as the demographics?
Yes.
Um, I actually live in one of these buildings just to the west.
Sure, yes, yes.
And there are tons of snowbirds in there, so the places are empty along the line. Some people try to run out. Are rentals going to be allowed in here? I mean, if you've got summer, you, and if you've got people coming and going.
Correct, so.
All summer.
The question is about rentals.
It's about rentals. So to be completely straightforward, the VRBOs, Airbnbs are not allowed. The only time where rentals are allowed under a circumstance is a single, a full year lease minimum. And the people leasing from the owner, the shareholder, has to also meet the age qualifications and all of the other financial obligations. The case that that comes in play in the 40 some cooperatives that we've developed or been part of is sometimes we have people that move in and they put the ownership of that share in a trust. And as soon as one of the individuals passes, maybe, you know, son, daughter, family does not currently age qualify, but they don't want to give up that share because when they do age qualify, they want it. So we allow them to rent that on an annualized basis minimum to somebody until they do age qualify.
In 41, 40 transactions that's happened, I can count them on one hand. It doesn't happen. We are not about short-term rentals, we're not about VBRO, we are strictly about cooperative ownership. And the way that that can work, where people can feel that they can have a second home is we're not charging them a fortune for it, we're giving them a, a price point that they can afford, choices from 800 and some odd square feet up to about 1600 square feet roughly, roughly. And those people can live in a building that has a connection to a community element that increases their livability of their home.
Can I ask the city council, what made you collectively as a group, this is nothing to do with you, think that this fits the culture of North Scottsdale?
The question is to the city council, what made them think that this would fit the culture of this area?
This is an inner-city concept, co-op, New York City. What made the city council think that it fits the culture up here? Yes, we have casitas and yes, we have drawing, but not anything like this. Nothing like this at all. So it's, it's nothing to do with the gentleman, they're presenting their plan, but we want to know, or I want to know, I can always speak myself, what made them, you, think that this fits the culture of North Scottsdale?
I haven't made any decision, I'm just here to get information, just like all of you are.
So this is your first time exposing, this is your first time been exposed as a.
Yeah, exactly.
In fairness, in fairness, this is the process, in fairness to the representatives here tonight, this is the process that we go through to glean information and we've got comment sheets, we'd love you to fill them out, we don't want just, we want your frank truth and the concerns you might have or the, or the support that you might give us. And we'll bring that forward to these meetings. No decision has been made, this is a process, a deliberative process that, that we go through every time we've been in front of an organization such as the city of Scottsdale or communities such as the city of Scottsdale. Here we are, so.
How many, how many deeded owners per unit?
How many deed?
Just one?
Correct.
Another one is a co-op.
Yeah, so, so to be abundantly clear, the question is how many people, how many deeded owners to the co-op? And it might be a husband and wife, but it's, it's one share, one unit. It's not fractional ownership like you have six different owners coming at six different portions of the year. You own it and frankly, again, back to my point, it's not so expensive that you have to take this multimillion dollar thing and divide it in seven so you can actually afford to live there. These units can be practically a second home or a first home for many people. There's 78 of them happening here, we have, we have the zoning rights to go up to 80, we're under. We're under the requirement that we could cap out at and we are, we're, from an economic standpoint, that's our model, so, yeah. Who was down here? Ma'am? What?
What kind of water studies do you have to do?
There will have to be water study stuff, oh yeah.
Yep, gotcha. So the question had to do with water supply for this development. As part of what I mentioned earlier, and maybe you hadn't come in yet, we're in the process of doing studies to evaluate the infrastructure. That will be provided as part of our formal application to the city of Scottsdale when they start holding the planning commission meetings and city council meetings to hear formally this project. I don't have the answers today, but we're, we're acutely aware of there being a water need to identify, okay? Yes, sir?
Who currently owns the past title to the property that we want to put this project on?
Per development.
Who currently has the owner of the title to the property per development, the owner of this mall? Yes, sir?
Yes.
I want to be clear about my questions and who I am. I'm Manny Shiprake and I served on the True North Board for 14 years. I'm not currently on the board.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The other thing I want to make very clear about, I have no position on this. I only learned about this less than 24 hours ago. So I don't currently have a position on this. I'm not against development, I've been looking at this parcel dirt for 20 years, so I, I wouldn't like to see development. Now, whether this is the right project or not, I don't know, but I could tell you that I led a seven-year battle with a couple other developers for True North. Successfully battled two different developers because they would not propose or develop in a way that's consistent with our community.
Sure, thank you, great questions, great comments, thank you.
I was involved in this parcel twice when others tried to develop it. So well aware that we have very significant legal impediments with our True North CCNRs.
Right.
About developing this. And I, I called the office to know if they, if you guys have dialogue with them yet and I'm saying you have not, right? And so I would greatly encourage you to contact them, one, try to sell them on your project, but two, find a way to help them help you. Because the way those CCNRs are written today, you cannot develop this, all right?
We appreciate the comment, yeah, much, very much though.
All right, so, and it's complicated and I understand that.
Sure.
But I'm not trying to discourage you at all, but others did get discouraged. I just would ask you to work with them. I just would ask you to work with them and figure out if there's a solution.
Sure.
Because the most common solution is to mend the CCNRs, but you'll never get them mended. You can't get 2,300 people to vote, enough of them to vote to get your 2/3 majority.
Sure.
It ain't going to happen unless you get some lawyers and allow them to get their lawyers, and you need to, you need to insulate them from the legal expense of whatever this is going to take to get, assuming, assuming you can sell them on the project.
Understand.
And I don't know if you can, but again, I don't know if I like this or not. I don't know enough about it.
And I, we appreciate the comments, sir, and to be forthright, to date the communication from the association, there was a letter that was sent out identifying exactly what you just overviewed on the CCRs. That was sent to the current title owner of the property. They communicated with me, and we've been basically working through the current property owner in responding to that, and our objective next is to take the step that you just recommended of meeting with the association to talk through that.
Great, okay, just, I'm sorry to dominate this question. I've had some experience with that. All right, so for example, one of the many issues that we dealt with is there are no co-op legal structures within True North, okay? And for everyone's attention, all this is within True North, okay? And all these, all these properties pay association dues to True North, okay? Current, however, what, one of the many legal questions that are going to have to be addressed is how are these assessed under True North? Because we have no co-op.
Sure.
Right now it's assessed as a parcel, okay? If you're developing a single family, it'd get carved up, and we would be, True North would be assessed as a parcel. But under co-op structure, I really, I'm not aware, I have no idea how that gets done. But one of the things that happened here was when Jerry Nelson created all this, this was his, and he purposely carved it out from many of our True North CCNR compliances, architectural, many other parking, okay? And that's also carved out. And my advice to the True North Board is in no way, and they do have to approve it, in no way should they approve it unless they also get, and I don't know how you do this legally, but you've got to give them control, that is, architectural control, micro, all the things that the HOA has rights to throughout True North has to apply to this problem.
But the same would be true, it's commercially, I think, is in the commercially zone now?
Yeah.
So that same process would be true if it was commercial, and I don't have an opinion yet either, but someone talked about traffic, are you going to have more traffic commercially? Or are you going to have more traffic residentially? And this would be the safety issue, would I rather have a majority of homeowners than a lot of strangers coming back and forth in commercial?
So again, True North has two, no, True North has this commercial property, but also the chase property is also within True North.
Great, thank you very much. Ma'am?
I am a current True North HOA board member, and I also happen to chair a committee dealing with the safety, the noise, and the speed issues on Dynamite and Alma School.
Terrible, terrible.
Mark Melchenko in the traffic department, the transportation department, has shot down every request that this committee that I'm currently chairing for the last two and a half, almost three years, asking for a reduction in speed, asking for stoplights, roundabouts. The community as a whole is all residential with a few isolated commercial parks.
Freeways.
We already have major issues with the traffic. We don't have any stoplights other than the one up here, and the city is basically telling us that we don't merit it, that we don't have enough accidents per the city of Scottsdale. We haven't had enough deaths, in other words. They tell us that when they do the speed studies that you talk about, the speed studies are done with notification to every single driver. Here comes a speed study with a flashing light, slow down. That does not accurately measure the speed that is going on Dynamite. You have trucks, construction, you have traffic that is landscapers with their, their horse trailers. Horse trailers. We have had water, the real verity issue with the, and that's, we finally got no engine braking ordinance. Scottsdale did not have it until the committee was able to get that. Now, we can't get enough enforcement on it, and the city will only give us two signs to tell the semi-trucks. We've asked for three, but they will only give us two. So this is continuing, this will add to the issues of what is already a major problem that we are struggling with the city of Scottsdale with.
So for one, I hear and appreciate that. We don't want to be further detrimental than what had already been contemplated for any development that goes on here. We won't be able to speak right in the here and now because our traffic study isn't done to know if our proposed development would require additional turn lanes, additional roadwork to either Alma School or Dynamite. We just don't know that here today, but that will come up in that traffic study. If we start checking some of those boxes that you haven't been able to on a projection basis, we're also acutely aware of traffic. This is a hot topic in any community that we develop. And all I can provide to you is context of how the communities we have developed and have opened function relative to alternatives. We've been in this position before where we've gone into a commercial area or a highly intensive-use area, where something else, like a grocery store with other retail establishments, from a traffic projection would likely be much higher than us. The reality is because we're, our buyers, our owners, are of the age that they are, 62-plus by and large, these are the people that are going to drive off-peak hours because they don't want to deal with the traffic demands on Dynamite or Alma School. And I'm not saying that it won't have. Hear me out, hear me out. I'm not trying to insult you. Please just respectfully hear me out. I'm listening to this, I understand that's a concern. The only thing I'll tell you is they will not want to juggle with or fight that traffic. It doesn't mean they won't add to the traffic, and until we have that study, I won't be able to speak to whether there are objectives that your committee that you chair can also be achieved, because we're helping to hit the threshold the city of Scottsdale hasn't enabled, kind of the dialogue to reach so far.
It's terrible.
But we'll be open with that. You'll have access to the traffic study.
This gentleman has raised his hand at least 10 times. I've looked at you, sir.
And maybe 20, so I have 20 questions, but I'm only going to ask two.
All right.
So one is a clarification question. When you talked in the beginning about four units per acre?
Yes.
How many units per acre are you going to have in this development? Each individual co-op owner is one unit, so how are you only going to have four in one acre? And you said just 8.7 acres?
The density allowed by the PCC district is four units per gross acre, so it's a 20-acre development, and we are at 78, so we are below the 80 units that's allowed within that district.
And that includes your open space and all that, correct?
Well, it, what it does is it analyzes the entire PCC, and then it says no more than this can be housing.
And in addition to that, we do have open space requirements, which compared to the original development plan, we are significantly less than on impervious surface going into that.
To that, to that point, when you look at the imagery, you'll see that there's the line that designates where somebody else could build up to, literally up to, and still preserve the NAOS. Ours, we're not going to put a fence there and say, this is what we should have preserved, but this is what we're not, we're preserving in addition. It's going to feel like it's 30, 40, 60% larger than what our requirements are, because we're respectful of that Snorn Desert that you love and we love as well.
So I have another question.